Good morning, everybody. We're going to call to order the June 11th Board of Commissioners to order. We look at this time for any public comments. Are there any public comments for items not appearing on the agenda that anybody would like to address at this point? Okay, hearing none. We're going to establish a quorum. This is Mike Pipe. I'm here from my home in Bollesburg.
This is Mark Higgins. I'm here from my home in State College.
And then we, all right, so we're all good. We, all three of us are here. We'll continue on with the agenda. Is there a motion? Let's see here. Yes, a motion to approve our minutes from our Thursday, June 4th meeting.
Motion approved. The meeting minutes from Thursday, June 4th.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Same time for opposed to that? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, great. We'll head into our COVID-19 planning response portion of our agenda, and we're going to begin with personnel. Our, let's see here. We have a correctional facility item, and this is to consider the approval of the reinstatement of Kay Woodring, and she would be going from full-time furlough to reduced hours effective June 14th. And we also have from emergency communications, considering the approval of the extension of the furlough of Dulce Holaba, addressing and communication generalist through July 3rd. We have five items for transportation, another one which would be to consider the extension of the other temporary furloughs and partial reduction of hours for our non-court related offices. Seeing who we have on the line here, we do have Dave Lamason, I believe, was joining us. Dave, if you'd like to make any comments for those five items in your office?
Just that we're not back up to speed yet. We're slowly climbing in trips and the need's not quite there to bring those people back yet, so thinking that if we give it another month, we could very possibly be coming back to you at that time saying, let's bring some of them back or even all of them. But right now, it's just prudent to keep them on furlough and work with the staff we already have working. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. For the correctional facility and 911, we don't see either Chris or Dale. Margaret, anything to add for those two items? Okay?
No, nothing to add. I would just say that I do know for 911 that they are becoming busier as there's more travel and more activity across the county. I spoke with Dale yesterday, and he shared with me that the 911 center is becoming much busier than it was even a week or two ago. So I think there's a need in the 911 office, and I think the same holds for the correctional facility.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. And in terms of the consideration of extension of temporary furloughs, that item, the very, very last item on that section, is there anything to note or to just discuss about the broader broader countywide status of those folks?
I think that our numbers have declined significantly from our starting point with today's actions. Assuming that they are approved, we will be below 20 individuals on full-time furlough status and a similar reduction in our part-time numbers. I think that we will know far more in the next two weeks about how things are going in the broader context, not only across county government, but within the county in terms of keeping our number of positive COVID-19 cases low. So I would recommend and put forward for your consideration an extension of the furloughs for another two weeks. At that point, we would be, that would be June 26th, we would be at the end of the month and could look at that in the context also of perhaps some changes to our protocols within our county buildings.
And to follow up on what Margaret said, right now, I just updated the spreadsheet, and we have 19 full-time and 17 part-time furloughs at this point.
And that's not including, that's prior to us taking action, Tom?
If you take the actions today, that will put it to 19 full-time and 17 part-time. If you do the actions today to continue the furloughs with transportation and then the adjustment from, in the prison from a full-time to part-time and the extension of the 911, we would have 19 and 17. I reflected what you did on Tuesday, but this would also include if you do those actions today, it would be 19 full-time and 17 part-time.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments on any of these items? Okay, hearing none. Would there be a motion for these, all these items?
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the personnel items for the correctional facility, emergency communications, and the five items for transportation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. And then this is not including the other ones that are not listed here. So, Mark, do you want to amend your motion, or do you want to take, we'll do this one, and then we'll take another vote for those other ones?
I think we should take another vote for the other ones that aren't specified.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hearing any further discussion on these three offices and the actions detailed within? Hearing none. All in favor of approving these say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. And then the consideration of the extension of the temporary furloughs, partial reduction in hours for non-court related offices, and this would be until June, two weeks would be June 29th, I believe.
Let me double check that.
Okay.
Is that the date Margaret agrees to as well, the 29th?
I used June 26th, Friday, June 26th. I was trying to stay at the end of the week.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
All right. So, motion to extend the temporary furloughs, partial reduction of hours for non-court related offices until Friday, June 26th.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Moving into our personnel items that are non-COVID specifically related, we have two for aging. Just to check to see if we have Ken or Natalie on the phone here. We do not. Margaret, anything to add for these items?
No, I do not have anything.
Okay. CYS, we have two items there. We do not see Julia. No worries there. Okay. Anything to add for those items, Margaret?
No.
Okay, and then our correctional facility as well. That would just be, again, a personnel requisition. Okay, so we have two items for aging. The first one is Stacy Ayers, full-time agent care manager. And the next one is revising the appointment for Amber Reese, full-time agent care manager 2 in the Office of Aging. For CYS, we have the approval of the promotion change in title for Erin Long from full-time caseworker 1 to full-time caseworker 2. We also have consider the approval promotion change of title for Tyrus Lundie from full-time caseworker 1 to full-time caseworker 2. And then at the correctional facility, we have the consideration of the approval of a personnel requisition for part-time CO at the facility. So we'd look for a motion to approve those items.
Motion to approve the two items for aging, the two items for children in youth services, and the single item for the correctional facility under personnel items.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Chad, good morning. We will turn it over to you for this next item. And good morning.
Good morning. Jason and I are going to kind of give a brief overview of the Finance Pro project and kind of the funding behind it. So Jason, if you want to give the kind of brief overview, and then I can talk about the funding.
Sure. So as we discussed, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now at one of the commissioner meetings, this is for the upgrade from Finance Plus, which we are currently on, and is also at its last updatable, if you will, version, moving to the Finance Pro, which is the cloud-based finance system that will allow a little bit more accessibility capabilities within the system itself. It will allow a little bit more robust finance reporting, a little more real-time reporting compared to what Finance Plus provides for us now. And I know you all sat through a demo with Central Square on this project as well. Chad, we'll talk about the funding here, but I would draw attention on the new amendment to the contract, in case Chad wasn't going to mention this, it was stealing thunder, but the contract startup fee was reduced from $10,000, I believe, to $7,500. So there's already a $25,000 savings on this project in that part of the contract as well. So at that point, I'll turn it over to Chad. Listen, any questions for me?
No, thank you, Jason. So the funding for this project, there is a one-time project cost that is not to exceed $72,000, but we anticipate not reaching that maximum as this is billed. Much of this cost is for training and travel, and they are billed as they are incurred, and we just don't anticipate needing as much as they budgeted, but we wanted to put the, you know, the maximum out in there. That one-time cost, it will come out of the ITS 2020 budget. We were able to procure some good pricing on some items at the beginning of the year, so the money is available in the budget. We will need to do a budget revision or anything. As far as the ongoing costs, our current ongoing Central Square cost is right around $45,000 a year. Moving to the cloud platform, the cost will go up a little bit, but just to $48,000, about 300 per year, and that would be a five-year contract at that price. So the reduction is, you know, maybe just 6% or 7%, which for a subscription-based cloud platform is really good that it's only going up by a couple percentage.
Okay, thank you both. Any questions for Jason or Chad on this? In terms of go-live, do we have a expected date?
So the project itself will take several months, so they'll need to build the cloud infrastructure. They'll need to migrate the data, that sort of stuff. So what, once the contract is executed, they can get started on those portions, but the go-live will be probably a few months from now. We can get a more of a firm date as we see kind of how that initial portion of the project build goes.
So in the contract, it doesn't have a, what are the dates that it says? Doesn't have any dates?
Well, it has dates for the length of the contract, but it does not have a specific go-live date, as there are, you know, certain factors that when you're building a project of this size that go into it, you know. So there's not a specific go-live date, but the contract does. So I'm looking for the contract date now, sorry.
No, it's okay. I just, I guess the big question is, you know, we'd love to be able to use this as we're putting together the budget for this year. And just, I'm just, you know, it's early on in this, but, you know, Tom, would you be, would you be able to utilize this in the budget if it's done by August, if it's at the end of August, or would we be really using this as we begin 2021?
We would probably be using it as we would begin 2021 and just realistically looking at being through the process before with them with the upgrade. Realistically, if we get them rolling right now, it'll probably be closer to the end of the year till this gets in place. What will need to happen is, is we will, you know, if this contract gets approved, the next steps will be to basically get set up with an install team. It's going to basically, a lot of the groundwork is taking the data that's in the current system that we have right now, and then making sure that that information gets transferred over into the, to the new system. And then again, it just will depend on, you know, how many other customers they have right now that are tied up with install teams. And so just setting that aside. Now, I know from before, when we went from the version that we were in, in the 4.3 to the 5.1, it was more of a heavy lift. So I think that they'll be able to tell Chad, maybe they'll say it's not going to take as long. But my experience from before is there's just a lot of moving parts to get that in place and to get everything where it needs to be. So I would be surprised that they would have something that early. And then it's familiarizing yourself on how those packages work. So it would probably be something that we would, again, towards one of our first focuses, we'll be getting the dashboards in place to be able to give actual reporting for everybody in the management position, and then trying to learn how those budget components work too.
And then in terms of when we're paying them, is there, how is that initial, I'm just concerned about giving them $72,000 upfront, and then them being able to come up with excuses about how long this is going to take. I just don't want us to be in the position of being in the mid-2021, and they're saying, look, COVID-19, we had a second wave, and we just haven't been able to get this up and running, but, you know, we'll be able to finish this by the end of 2021. What protections do we have against them doing that?
Yeah, Mike, so the, the payment terms, the startup fees, which is the $7,500, that is to be invoiced within 30 days if this contract was approved. The subscription fees for the first year won't be invoiced until we do go live. And then the professional services are billed on a monthly invoice as they are incurred. So the, really, the only thing we're paying upfront is $7,500 to get the project started. And then as we do training, as they do consulting, as they do the data migration, that'll be paid as it's incurred over the next couple months as they build out the project. And then the subscription fee for the, which would be the $48,300, that doesn't, it says, shall be invoiced upon go-live.
Okay, that's helpful.
Mike, this is Margaret. I know that Chad and I have talked about the timing of this because it's so critical for us to have this up and running, especially for the electronic purchase orders and so forth, should we have a recurrence of needing to be fully remote in the fall. And maybe one thing we could do is to ask them to put some dates in writing for us about, with some parameters around what the timing looks like, because I know that Chad, you have asked them, and I just don't know if we have anything in writing about how long they think the actual conversion of data and so forth takes. But we could ask for that to get some more definitive parameters in there.
Yeah, we, yeah, the range that they, they've really just given us a range at this point, because like Tom was saying, there, there's a lot of moving parts and variable factors that it's really kind of hard to pinpoint. You know, it'll take 90 days, for example, because it'll depend on, you know, how easily is the data migrated over and a lot of other factors. But I'll certainly can go see if I can kind of pinpoint maybe, you know, 30-day range or something like that where they think we could be on go-live.
Because data migration for us should not be all that difficult, given that we're already in the, in the same software. It's not like we're moving from an external software package to this package. There should, there should be some ease in this migration over, I would think.
Correct. And as Tom mentioned, the previous sort of, you know, migration from Central Plus a couple years ago was a much more of a heavier lift because we were jumping a lot of versions. This isn't, a nearly as a significant version jump, so to speak. So that process shouldn't be as intensive or time-consuming as we previously experienced.
But we do need some, I would agree that we need some sort of more firm commitment from them so that they can't push our, you know, maybe it only takes 30 days or whatever, but we need a commitment from them that once we sign this, once the Board of Commissioners signs, that in fact, we're on the top of their list for taking care of this. We don't want to get pushed down, you know, and be way down their to-do list.
What you all outlined is, I think it helps me tremendously. I just was curious about what the go-live was, and then protections we had about not having us pushed off, but I'll stop there. Any other questions, comments on this item? Feedback?
No.
Okay.
Just, just happy to see it moving forward. Would love to have a financial dashboard where the commissioners and administrator and other senior staff, including finance, can kind of at a glance, see how things are going.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, hearing no further discussion, would there be a motion?
Motion to add the amendment to the contract with Pentimation Enterprises, Inc. to the June 16th consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final comments or questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay. Chad and Jason, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Under discussion items, we're going to be discussing a cleaning proposal, and we'll turn it over to Margaret for some introduction, and we welcome Lee. Good morning, Lee.
Thanks very much. I'd like to have a conversation this morning with you about cleaning, especially as it pertains to our courthouse and our courthouse campus, so to speak. As you know, historically, we've had issues around cleaning. We have gone through three different cleaning companies. Issues still remain, and Lee has thought through some other possibilities of how we might address cleaning in a more effective and efficient manner. So I will turn it over to him.
Thanks, Margaret. So yeah, so the last year and a half, we've actually had more of a role in the courthouse during the off-hours. We've been able to realize some things and see some things. And I think we have an opportunity to, as Margaret said, be more effective with our cleaning staff. When I came onboard, yeah, like she said, we, we had contracted out those services. We rolled through with the number of staff because of the number of staff that the contractors were using and realized that it wasn't going to be to our benefit to hire staff at that point. But looking at the financials and the personnel that they had in there and the number of hours that I've actually seen them on site, I don't know if we necessarily need to have three staff. I feel that if we have two full-time staff to take the place of that, I think we could be really effective. One, they're under, we have a direct relationship or a direct management to them as opposed to, you know, involving a supervisor from a contracted service. Onto the financials, so our NITNY annual contract for those three facilities was $119,040. The potential, and I'll finalize this with Tom, but what I've come up with some numbers is, and a member of our staff, where he was, depending on benefit range packages and things like that, we have a potential to hire two center county employees at a cost of $75,000 to $80,000 to the county, which, which will give us about a, you know, you're looking at a 25, perhaps a $25,000 to $30,000 savings as opposed to running with the contract. And then again, you know, we are, I think we could be more effective managing those personnel. In essence, at the end of the day, the way I see it, we could perhaps have, you know, we have the three Willabang staff. We would have five janitorial staff to take care of all of these buildings. And when we look at, you know, perhaps the activities within each of the buildings, you know, we could move some staff around, sort of like my staff does during the day, you know, we can be working in any other, any, you know, portion of any buildings at any given time. So I think with that, you know, with a staff of five, that would bring us to on the janitorial end. I think we could be really effective, more effective and more bang for our buck, should I say, you know, you know, at the end of the day. So that's a proposal I put out there now. Again, you know, we've talked, I would, when we look at the current contract that we have, I would like to continue using the contractor. We have a secondary portion of that contract where we use them at the MDJ office. That is separate from the $119,000. That's $7,200 annually for them to clean the MDJ offices. We'd like to keep that intact, but again, I just think looking at the, at the other portion of it, I think, you know, we can have a better effect, you know, to our staff and helping out in the buildings.
This period during the construction, the period during the construction has really given Lee and his staff a much better look inside what it takes to keep that facility clean. It also has given him a look into how few hours the contractor is spending there. I think that there are still, there have been still concerns on the part of the court personnel about cleaning, and this type of a direction would give Lee the ability to really ride herd on what's happening and come up with a much better result. As Lee said, we, we thought about this a year or more ago, and the, and the numbers didn't work. But as we've reevaluated and things have changed, we think that it would actually be a savings for the county's budget.
Okay. Thank you, Lee and Margaret. Well done in terms of bringing this to us, and we wish the contractor would have been able to, and the vendor would have been able to perform, but it's not the case. And so we're here now. Any feedback, questions for Lee or Margaret?
I'm good.
I, I'd like to see a little more detail between the cost of health insurance, the reasonably nice benefit package the county offers. I'm just not sure we're going to be able to hire two people and pay all of their costs for only $80,000.
Yeah, what we can do. I can definitely work on that with Tom. I, when I looked at my, my, my budget and, you know, what my personnel are, I'm in that, I'm in that, you know, that about $80,000 range. But I can finalize those, finalize those numbers and work with Tom on that, and we can report back definitely.
But will the staff?
I was just going to say, today, we wanted to start the conversation with you to see if you, you know, had an interest in us perhaps doing more work on this, and that's certainly something that we can put together. We also would need to come back in and ask for formal action to terminate the existing contract and then for personnel requisition approval and so forth. And we would put together a budget document so that you can see the exact, you know, projected cost.
And they'll still be working primarily like a second shift?
That is correct.
All right. Some of the other items you mentioned are compelling. The increase in control, the ability that when the courthouse needs a little additional attention, we can shift one of our own staff to help. When the courthouse is running a little light, you know, maybe we can shift some, somebody to do something else, second shift in one of the other buildings.
Right. Yeah, for me, it's always been about getting a, you know, a clean, getting to every day, having a clean facility. And sometimes the contractors are not living up to that, and we've heard it from folks at the courthouse that that's been an issue. And Lee and his team have been on it, on it, on it, but they're still not performing. And so unfortunately, we've now gone through three cleaning contracts, and just, we're just not getting the performance we need. So but even if, I'll say this, I'll put this out there, even if there's not as large a savings, even if it's a few thousand dollars that we are saving, if it's not $20,000 or so, I still would be supportive of it just because I think that we just, you know, we, it's something that we need time and attention on, and it's it's something that we need time and attention on and it's, it's needed. But hopefully, again, as you work with Tom, Lee, you can get more firm numbers and the savings will come out of that. But at this point, are we, are we comfortable with proceeding? We're not taking any actions. Hey, we're just saying to Lee and Margaret, continue to go forward on this and, and bring us back some more firm numbers and we can go from there.
Oh yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, super. All right, well, thank you, Lee. Thank you, Margaret, for this. We appreciate the work on this and again, we'll look forward to the conversation, future conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into executive session reports, Margaret, do we have any executive sessions to report?
Sorry, no, we do not.
No, no worries. Okay. We have the balance of our schedule there. We would want to allow the opportunity for anybody from the press to ask us any questions at this time, if there was anybody from the press on the phone with us. Give them a few seconds if they needed to unmute themselves. Okay, seeing no, no one there. We would then look for a motion to, and I just want to double check, I didn't see any salary board items. Kristen, is that correct?
That's correct, no salary board items.
Okay, no salary board. Okay. All right, anything to come before the Board of Commissioners? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 10:33.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, have a great day, everybody.